Campbell was working on this, but we had to get some outside information and it took longer than we expected and anxious to get started. This would be a motion. Motion would read to approve or not approve to accept the, to acknowledge receipt of the November 1st memo from Todd Campbell and to approve or not approve the IBM agreement for exchange of confidential information and the member agreement, excuse me, for special projects versus a kind municipal shared service cloud project and to authorize the mayor to execute said agreements. Mayor and clerk. And we, I will read that again, but I know you have that information on the table, so I know that Mr. Campbell will give us an opportunity to explain that. And actually, I've probably split that into two motions since we just had, got it tonight. And then additionally, we will be adding, after public comment, a motion to convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing purchase of real estate and the city council will not reconvene into regular session at conclusion of the closed session.
Mayor, a question on point of order. This item 10-161, our council guidelines state that generally speaking, we're allowed and afforded a significant amount of time to review proposals prior to voting on it. Is it that imperative that this be voted on tonight?
Well, we can discuss that at the time of the motion. At this point, I would, as I said before, I would be happy to move it as to acknowledge receipt of the November 1 memo so that Mr. Campbell can explain why it's on the agenda tonight and what the urgency is regarding this matter.
Okay. Thank you.
With those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
The road to second moral?
Law, me.
Law, sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We have citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. The season period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Anyone that would like to speak to the council on anything on this agenda.
Dean Gerbach, 601 South Ann Arbor Street. I know that tonight you're doing the presentation on the financial reports and I happen to read the section three on other recommendations. I'd be, I would like to hear from the auditors regarding bank reconciliations and outstanding receivables because it appears that some of this information has been on prior audits. And so I'd like to understanding that according to this, that there are some bank accounts that haven't been reconciled or didn't appear in some of the financials or some of the information related to it. And also the receivables that have been outstanding, just to find out what's happening with internal controls. Thank you.
Three other citizen comments. Not when we want, we have motioned to approve and adopt the items on consent agenda as submitted.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item C10-158 for discussion, please.
Okay. That under new business after 10-161. Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Councilor Ivey?
Move to approve consent agenda as amended.
Second.
The motion, second at law, to approve and adopt the items on consent agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, 1024, this is the audit report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2010. We do have our auditors here tonight. Thank you for coming to present the audit report.
Thank you. I'm going to just do the introduction and then we're going to cover the graphs. My name is Martin Olenek. I along with Les Ball of our partners in the city's financial statement audit. And along with me is Ellie Stidle and she'll be covering the graphs. So she's the in charge for the audit, basically responsible for day-to-day activities during the process of the testing. We have various documents that we're going to cover tonight. One is the, we're not going to cover page by page, don't worry. Financial statement itself with additional information. One item that I did want to point out is on page one itself is the independent auditor's report, which is essentially the only piece of the document that really is plant more ends. And in that, we state that the financial statements receive an unqualified opinion, which basically is like receiving letter A, grade A in school. So you can rely on the statements, they are materially correct, and you know, you can budget according to the statements, et cetera. So everything in the document you can rely on and that's exactly what you should expect every year from your team, making sure that you receive an unqualified opinion. So just wanted to make sure that you know that. Other couple of documents that we're going to go over are the financial statement graphs. So instead of going page by page for the financial statements, we're going to go through the graphs and kind of the highlights for the general fund as well as water and sewer funds. And then at the end, I'm going to cover the letter, the third piece of document you have with you. And that, basically that letter is comprised of four different parts and we'll talk about it in a few minutes. So Ellie?
Thank you. I will please pull out their graph packet, get started. First, we're going to go over the general fund revenue for the year. And in total, general fund revenue was just over 8.1 million. And the largest and key sources for the city are the property taxes, both residential and non-residential. Combined, it's a 72% of the total revenue for general fund for the year. We flip to the next graph, shows the general fund for, shows the general fund for the next five years, or excuse me, the five-year trend for the past five years for general fund. As you can see, most of the revenue sources are pretty consistent with the exception of property tax, which again, has decreased slightly over the past few years, given the decrease in taxable value. On the next slide, I'd like to talk about the general fund expenditures. In total, general fund expenditures were just under 7.1 million. Largest portion of this is the general government, which has most of the salaries and wages for majority of department, departments for the city. And then the second largest expenditure for the city is the public safety in the yellow portion, the, just under 2.1 million. And again, looking at the five-year history for the expenditure buckets, as you can see, the expenses within the different categories fluctuate, have fluctuated from year to year. Increases in general government this year has, have been consistent over the past five years. But overall, the expenditures have decreased from last year, which is important to note because it's, it's showing that the city is keeping costs within line of the decreasing revenues that we're going to talk about in a few slides to show that the, the capital outlay, for example, has decreased and that's a controllable expense that the city has really been looking at. And also on the next slide, we can see that the expenses have remained stable, even though if, on the next slide, the general fund fund balance has decreased slightly. Again, with your decrease in revenue, your larger decrease in expenditures, overall, you're doing decent compared to all the, the rest of the history here shown for general fund balance. In current year, the fund balance is just over 3.1 million. Of that, the designated portion, which is the gray area, is around 249,000 and undesignated is 2.9 million, or yeah, excuse me, 2.9 million. So again, these are just portion of the fund balance that the board or the city council has not decided to set aside for a specific purchase. So if you can look at these, the history over these past 11 years, where in 2000, 2001, you had a large construction project and then that fund balance has continued to build back up and stay relatively consistent, it's quite an accomplishment for the city, given the current economic struggles. And then again, looking at the capital expenditures on the next slide, you can see that from 2009 to 2010, the capital expenditures have decreased by around 600,000. So again, the city is really controlling the, the costs that are within its control as far as the spending for the current year. The next slide shows the governmental revenues. So this is the city as a whole. So this is showing everything that relates to the capital outlay as well as any larger expenditures that would have happened related to capital purchases and fixed assets. Overall, it's just, just under 10.8 million dollars in total. And again, the largest portion, similar to the general fund revenue, the property taxes are the largest source of this, at around 5.9 million and 40, 55%. We look at the general expenditures, again, on the full accrual basis, around 11.9 million. Can see, again, similar to general fund, when it was solely presented, that the general government and public safety are the largest expenditures, making up around 47% of the city's expenditures. Next, if we focus primarily on property taxes on the next graph, this graph represents the taxable mills, or the tax mills that the city collects during the year for president or principal and non-principal residents. You can see that of the total for non-principal, 62 mills are collected, but the city really only keeps 15.53 mills. So with, with the large amount of revenue that's coming in, a large amount of that is being distributed and only a small portion is being retained by the city for its operations. If we look at the history on the next slide of the mills levied for the city, can see that it's been relatively flat and has stayed the same for the past six years at the 15.53 We looked at the mills levy comparison on slide 11. This shows the comparison of taxable mills for the surrounding communities around the city of Saline. You can see that some communities higher levy, or levy higher tax mills compared to what the city of Saline does. So the city is definitely in line or lower compared to some of the surrounding community is seeing at the 15.53. This next slide represents the taxable value. Again, as the property tax revenue is decreasing, you can see in the, the last two columns, the 2010 and 2011, that the property tax values declining have resulted in a decline in total revenue for the city. The decline from 2010 to 2011 is 3.6% in just taxable value alone. And on slide 13, it shows the gap between the taxable value and the state equalized value due to proposal A. As you can see that the gap is decreasing. If you look along the bottom portion of this graph, you can see that the forgone revenue has been decreasing over the past few years as that gap has been closing. And in this year, the forgone revenue for 2010 is 264,000. Next, I'd like to change focus and look at the water and sewer funds. On this first slide of the next three, represents the combined total for water and sewer for the income from operations, income or loss, excuse me. So if you'll look to see in the far right-hand column, 2010, the operating loss from the system is 235,000. That is before depreciation is taken into account. So if you exclude depreciation from the operating expenses, you have an overall operating income or income to work with to help replace the old water and sewer lines of 709,000. So in the next slides, again, just break out the detail of what this slide shows. So we'll look at the water fund next. You can see in that last column for 2010, that the operating income is almost at a break even, even before the effects of depreciation. And then further with the sewer fund, can see into the 2010 column, the operating loss is 243,000 before the effects of depreciation. And afterwards, taking into account the depreciation expense, it'd be 248,000 of surplus for that, from operations from the water fund alone. Switching gears into the pension system, I'd like to point out that in the first column shows the accrued liability for both, all three of the employees, terminated employees and retired employees. So that total liability to the city is 17.3 million. If you look in the middle column, you can see the green area, the actuary assets, the value of assets is 12 million. So you might look and see, well, there's a huge difference. Well, really, if you look at the, the line across, across the graph, you can see that the retiree portion is 9.2 million plus the terminated employee, or the terminated liability of 400,000. So if you add those together, you're under, you're around 9.5 million of liability for people that are no longer paying into the system. So if you look at the assets compared to people that are no longer paying in, you're definitely have covered that void. So the area in blue at the top of that first column are all the current employees that are still paying into the pension system and are being covered as the premiums are being paid each month. And the last slide shows all of the revenues and receipts brought in through the finance and accounting department. We've already touched a little bit on the general fund and water and sewer fund, but as you can see, that the finance staff track and account for a very large volume of receipts. And it really speaks to the management and their ability to manage this level of activity throughout the year. In total, you brought over 20 million dollars revenue and receipts for the fiscal year 2010. Are there any questions?
We won't hold you to it, so you can always ask questions later on too, so.
Thank you.
The last item that we wanted to go over is the letter that you have as well in your documents. And I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it beforehand. I'm sure a couple of items have, you probably have some questions as well, so. The letter is similar to the past. There's, a couple of years ago, there was a new pronouncement that came out that basically requires some additional documentation, additional literature that has to be provided. In the past, a lot of this would have been covered verbally, so the letter is a lot thicker than would have been about two or three years ago. The letter is broken up in sections. Section one actually starts on page three, and that's what accountants call, says 115 communication that's required. Essentially, what happens is during the audit, if we, we look at internal controls to kind of assess what needs to be tested and now, you know, what needs to be looked at. And there are different things that are looked at during the process. And if there's any findings or anything like that, accounts always like to classify things into different buckets. And there's essentially three different buckets that accounts classify things in. One is if there's any errors or anything like that, a control deficiency, a significant deficiency and a material weakness. None of the terms are, sound very good. I do want to point out, first of all, that the financial statement, you can completely rely on it. It's an unqualified opinion, like I mentioned earlier. The one item, basically what happens as of, in regards to this testing that we do, is basically seeing if the audit identified something or if it was identified by your internal controls. So during the process, we did find a couple of adjustments that were booked that are reflected in your financial statements as a result of the audit. And therefore, we have to give you the, this documentation so that way you're aware of what happened. Again, the records have been adjusted to make sure that the records are intact and they're reliable. The main item that we found that was an adjustment for was depreciation expense. And the records that were underlying, you know, behind the general ledger were calculated correctly. There was a misposting to the general ledger. One amount got booked in the opposite direction that it was supposed to be. So we discovered it during the audit and we had to adjust it, basically double fault and correct for the error that went the wrong direction. There was a couple of other adjustments as well that we found, but that was the most significant of the adjustments. And again, the records have been reflected. We did talk to management about it to see, you know, what could we do in order to correct the issue so that way we wouldn't have those adjustments in the future. One item that we suggested potentially that would be done is maybe have a month-end and a year-end checklist. So I think everything was in line to get, to get done. There's just so many things that need to be done at year-end especially. And like Ellie showed the final slide, you have over 20 million dollars in receipts. And with, you know, the pressures from revenues and so on with property taxes, it's, you can't hire more individuals and things are tight. So what could be done in order to kind of focus in and be able to identify the issues? And again, a month-end checklist, I think, would streamline the process and make sure that people can, can identify things a little bit easier. I think that everyone does a great job, it's just, there's a lot to do. And with the audit coming up, I'm sure that there's a lot of pressures coming up and getting things done on time. So having a checklist, we suggest is maybe having a preparer sign off as well as the date of when they prepared the items, then have a reviewer do the same thing so that way everyone knows when everything was done. Then maybe have a final sign-off by someone at the very end to make sure that all the steps were done on the checklist. And like I said, we already met and talked, and I did provide some samples of checklist that could be used in order to make, basically make the process a little bit easier. The next section of the letter is on page four, there's section two, it says 114, all these numbers. Says 114 letter is basically in response to the pre-audit letter that was given to you in your council packets a couple of months back. This one just basically describes the audit process itself, if we had any disagreements with management, if, you know, how the process overall went. Nothing really significant in this letter. We did note that there was no disagreements, there was no issues or anything like that during the process. And basically, the timing and everything of the audit occurred just like we planned on ahead of time. Next section is on page seven, which just other items, other recommendations that we may have found during the audit. So they wouldn't have been identified in the previous section that we talked about, the month-end checklist. But these are just random, I call it picky items that auditors tend to find and just making sure that, you know, basically dotting your i's, crossing the t's, things that can generally help out. Bank reconciliations. So we reviewed during our audit process, we look over all your bank reconciliations, making sure that one, clerically, they're correct, but also the timing, when they're prepared, it's timely done with it, usually within a month of a month-end. There was one bank reconciliation that was done past the one-month period, believe it was about two months past the month. There was a change in payroll systems and that's why it contributed into the lag time. But it was reconciled, it was just a little bit longer than what we would recommend. So we identify it here. Another item, the second paragraph, there's a bank account that you have at the bank and we confirmed it with the bank, the balance was correct. But instead of identifying the general ledger as a cash account, it's identified as a different account. So we were just recommending to make sure you classify as cash. So it is recorded, it's just not classified as cash, per se, in your financial statements, or not in your financial statements, but in your general ledger. And then also the last item, and this is actually very common, for outstanding checks on the, on your bank reconciliations, there were a few checks that were over a year old. We recommend that those are reviewed and if you, you know, either reissued or potentially even, you know, remitted to the state so that way they can try and find the proper person to collect the paycheck or the, the checks for. Outstanding receivables, this is a repeat item from last year. There is a receivable, actually from the state of Michigan that's on the books that we're trying to collect. So we're just identifying that and making sure that the finance department keeps pursuing the collection of receivable. There are different documents that have been filed in order to collect it, but it's just been over a year, so we wanted to identify it. Next item, account reconciliations. This is a repeat from last year, actually the last couple of years. There have been some accounts in the trust and agency fund that are a little bit older, past 2005, that they haven't been really reconciled for the last couple of years, last few years. So we just encourage the city to keep looking at those items. They have been reconciled since then and have been reviewed regularly, so it's not a, a large item and you shouldn't, it shouldn't have any impact to the city financially. It's just, there's an asset and a liability that are offset each other and there's really no underlying records to support that, so perhaps negating those amounts and clearing the general ledger. And then the last item is for capital assets. Overall, so GSB 34, again, I go with the numbers. A few years ago, probably about six or seven years ago, all the municipalities in Michigan had to go through and record everything on a full accrual basis. So record all the fixed assets on the books, long-term debt, basically in a separate set of books in your financial statements. At that time, the city went through and did a extensive inventory for fixed assets, making sure that everything that you have on the listing, you actually own, that you have in possession and so on, and everything's valued correctly. Since then, we've been tracking the additions and deletions through the process, but no one's really gone back and done in full extensive inventory to make sure that the listing still agrees with what you have on hand. Not that those don't match, but I would just encourage the city to go through the process again. Probably a pretty easy process to go through it now versus waiting another five or six years because everything's pretty fresh. So every few years, we would suggest going through the process. And then lastly, going through, potentially implementing a formal disposal, fixed asset disposal policy. The city's disposal policy is fine, but there's nothing in written form, so that's why our recommendation to have something in writing. And then the last item that we have for suggestions is regarding information technology. We issued a memo last year for IT and any general suggestions that we had. That memo, we reviewed your IT overall and basically that memo still, still complies that, still the same suggestions as last year that we would have. And again, some of those items that we identified last year probably would not be cost-effective potentially, or you know, perhaps maybe down the line, you want to implement, but we just want to make sure that you're aware that those items still pertain. And then the last section of the letter is section four, and those are just general legislative items that would be going around, around the state of Michigan and in the US. First item that I think are the hot topic that we've had discussions with over the last few years is revenue sharing. So although these, this letter is the most current item that, you know, we could find from the state of Michigan, keeps changing it seems like from day to day. So we just make sure, we want to caution you to make sure to keep an eye on the revenue sharing. It does say that supposedly revenue sharing should stays the same as last year, but again, with the election going on and everything, who knows what's going to happen. So we would just encourage you to keep checking on the website, making sure your revenue sharing payments are still the same. And then property tax developments. So I'm sure you're aware what's going on at the city. I don't want to keep spreading the cheer. But you know, the one thing is to caution you, and I think your staff has done an outstanding job overall, not only keeping track of where the revenues are coming in and how much they're going to be over the next few years, but also making sure that your expenses are in check in order to make sure that you don't, you know, deplete your fund balance. So Ellie's mentioned that earlier. I think that's one thing that's extremely hard to do nowadays, and if you look at municipalities all around the state, a lot of them have depleted their fund balances significantly. So you really need to be complimented by what you've done so far, you know, with the fund balance and making sure that you keep everything in check. The one item that we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of, and it seems like the city is, but we want to make sure that, there is a time lag between when you levy your taxes and when the revenues show up in your records. And right now, the state, the economy, it seems like it's starting to rebound a little bit or at least flatten, so hopefully it's not going to go down anymore. But that lag, so we're seeing kind of the flattening right now, but we're not going to really see that for another year or two on your financial statements. So we just want to caution you to that. And there's also various items that we mentioned here, that some of the items that the city's already done, looking at forecasts and making sure that you look at your expenses and so on. So there's a few items that we pointed out that a lot of municipalities have been doing. So in case you're interested in any additional items, you know, if you have any questions or anything like that, we can help out as well. And then a couple of other miscellaneous items. The state has changed some of the requirements for refunding bonds, basically refinancing the debt. So in the past, you always had to have a net present value savings in order to refund a bond. a bond. Nowadays, it's, you don't need to have the net present value savings, so you don't have to overall save the money. You can just lower your payments on an annual basis. So, you can basically extend out your bonds to a longer period of time. I know it's not necessarily something that everybody wants to do, it's kind of like refinancing a house from 10 years to a 30-year mortgage, but if there's ever a cash shortage, you can always extend out the bond payments. And again, given the city's financial position right now, I think you've done a great job, but just in case. The next item, I know your finance staff was extremely happy about this one, the 1099 regulation. So, what is required to be filed for 1099s right now is anything over $600, starting in 2012, basically, there is no minimum. So, if you pay somebody a dollar or more, you have to give them a 1099. So, we just want to make sure that you're aware of it, and you implement the necessary measures in order to be able to comply with that. And the last item is another Gatsby that's coming out for next year's financial statements. And basically, what we see right now in your fund balance classification is the designated, reserved, undesignated, we're going to have different classifications next year. And in this letter, it spells out what we're going to have. So, instead of having three different categories, we're essentially going to have six different categories for net assets in fund balance. So, it's all that we have in the letter. I know it's a pretty lengthy. I do want to thank the city and the staff for spending the time. I know it's a burden, just, I know everyone's really busy as it is, and then going through an audit, that just gives an extra layer of, you know, additional time that's required to prepare and do everything. So, we really do thank the city, and if you have any questions or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer it now, or we can come back, or whichever way you prefer.
Do they have any questions on council? Mr. Little?
Regarding the money the state owes us, do you find that other municipalities that they're dogging on their permits?
So, from the state itself, we have not seen it recently. Here, it was a glitch with paperwork that we thought we filed accordingly and making sure that we get the money on time, but apparently, the state, I think, said something that, you know, there was an additional document or something that was missing, so if I'm not incorrect on that. So, usually, you don't see it too much. I know that a lot of states are really slow in paying in general, but usually with that kind of a receivable, I haven't seen it recently.
Thank you.
And Mr. La.
The month-end checklist you suggested that the city implement?
Yes.
You said that is to lessen the burden on the city staff, and also I guess on you, or?
Yeah, I think a zero win. So, the city staff, I think, would be able, know exactly where everything stands. So, it wasn't really, I don't think it would reduce the amount of work necessarily, but I think it would be able to kind of paint a roadmap to make sure that everybody knows where everything stands and, you know, how much more is left to do in order to get the close done.
You think that that would eliminate a lot of the hiccups, if you want to call them, that you see come up once in a while, such as the bank reconciliations and all those kinds of things?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What? It's up to you. Also, we did get a letter, I think everybody in their packet has the response from staff regarding the auditor's statements, and I don't know if anybody has any questions. I know our treasurer's here in the audience. If you have any questions regarding the status of her report, she's available for questions. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. La.
Just picking up from the monthly, because that's intriguing to me a little bit about the checklist, I'm just curious, just from your point of view?
I think what happens, Martin painted a really, an exact picture of what happens, is that you start getting down to a crunch line, and you got all this stuff coming down, and everything, you've still got your daily routine to. And what happens often, and what happened with the major debit versus credit issue there, the paperwork was done, everything was accurate, we knew it was accurate, so there wasn't that extra check, because we were in a time crunch, so we put it aside. However, I know that I have to go back and check those things, but it was, oh, yep, I remember, you know, auditors needed this number, and I had something else going the other way. So, if I had a checklist, I really do think that it will help put everyone's mind at ease, and God forbid if something happens to me in the middle, you know, I didn't finish something up. Lee looked at the financials, you know, they looked complete, but had he, you know, with the checklist, he could say, oh, she didn't proof it yet, or she didn't have another set of eyes check it. So, then he would be able to check those type of things before it gets to the auditor. So, yes, I do, I think it will help. Martin has sent some to us, and I'm in the, in month-end, and each time I go through one of the funds or anything, I adapt that checklist to that month-end, which obviously is taking a little bit longer than what it normally takes, but I think in the long run, it will save us some time. So, checks and balances, Lee and I have worked together over the past couple of years, but things happen, and, you know, you get new hires, you get new people, you get an interruption, and you miss something. And if you had a checklist there to help with that, I think that would help prevent that. So, I think the checks and balances are there, but sometimes you just rush through, muddle through, and hope for the best.
Any other questions? I'd just like to congratulate staff, because I know it's, having been in the industry, I know it's a lot, it's complex, and I know that's why our auditors are here for, to see, to look for any opportunities to improve the operations, but I know from talking to auditors that you, in the department, and they do an excellent job, so I'd like to commend you on your good work.
Well, thank you. It's helpful, very helpful, to have someone else look at your work. I mean, you do stuff every day, and so it helps, and they've been very supportive and given us a lot of ideas on how we can make improvements, which is our ultimate goal. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion here to acknowledge receipt of the October 3, 2010, letter and financial report from Plant Moran for fiscal year ended June 30, 2010, and the October 20, 2010 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding auditor's corrections and recommendations.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Move Ivy, Second Morrow. To acknowledge receipt, discussion. There's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 0866, Huntington Woods Phase 1 Street Dedication Agreement, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 4, 2010 memo from City Superintendent J. Rubel to approve or not approve the agreement with the addendum, as was handed out on our counter tonight, between the City of Celine and Huntington Woods Homeowners Association for Dedication of Streets to the City of Celine, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor to execute said agreement after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Move Law, Second Little. Discussion. Mr. Rubel, or do you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, representing the request is the President of the Homeowners Association and 12 members of the Huntington Woods Homeowners Association in the audience. Just a brief summary of the packet materials, you have the two-page staff memo, you have the three-page agreement. Together with the handout materials, Mr. Grossman, our city attorney, has amended Part 1A, which was one of the review points in the recommendation as a follow-up, but we have it now in advance, so that the attorney has reviewed, and we have amended that part of the agreement to cover the association of, not the homeowners association, but the association between this document and its impact on the development agreement. That's the development agreement between prior developer, Mr. Shipman, and the City of Celine. So, this covers that one conflict that would otherwise have sort of been an obstacle. And that obstacle being that $190,000 was supposed to have been paid to the township prior to accepting of the streets. However, the economy becoming very bad, that became an obstacle to the eventual accepting of the streets. So, by adopting this agreement, we will have amended that one small conflict with the development ordinance, or, excuse me, the development agreement. Then after that, we have the Exhibit A, which is the cost estimate that covers the repair items to make the streets, bring the streets up to our standard for maintenance. And in this instance, we're doing something different, because compared to other, the other two transfers, Arboretum and Breckenshire, in that the association here is small, most of the lots are undeveloped and so forth, they don't really have the capital or expertise to do this themselves. By economy of scale, we can get this accomplished through our subcontractors' forces, and probably in a much more equitable manner, and then blend it into our work. And so, we do, that is a benefit to us building it to our standard and our control, and also save some money for the association. And then lastly, we have Exhibit B, which is the map of Phase 1 Huntington Woods. It shows the three streets being transferred, that being Huntington Drive, Arlington Drive, and Newcastle. As I noted in the cover letter, there were basically two issues unresolved. One of those issues was resolved on Friday last week. DTE Representative, Mr. Sean Gude, came in, and he presented the municipal lighting agreement, which is very important to us, because it clears up the problem they had for the last two years about whether or not DTE would accept the lighting system as municipal streets, so that we could enter them into our street lighting contract. So, that's been resolved as of last Friday. The, this item will appear on the next agenda then, and we'll ask the council to accept the deed for the streets, as well as the street lighting system. And prior to next meeting, the association, I anticipate, will present us with a check of $16,000 to cover the repair items in advance, so that we can proceed in the next 18 months or so and achieve those repairs on the streets, as shown in Exhibit A. And so, with that, I believe we've addressed all the significant matters within the development agreement, so that we can move forward, then on November 15th, take care of the last two actions, and then we will have met the deadline of January 1 for accepting the streets, so they can go on the Act 51 report. If we don't accept them in 2010, they won't be recognized by the state for revenues back in 2011. Then it would be pushed off to 2012.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rob?
I was looking at this item that was just handed out to us, or the change to Part A, Item 1, and trying to reconcile it with what was in the existing document, and I understood the changes to 1, but then I couldn't reconcile A to the old A, and then I just realized, I think, now that the old A has gone away completely. So, we now have Part A, 1A, and that's it.
Correct. Correct. B is the, B in Part A, number 1, B, that's a small b, excuse me, that stays the same, Part B, but you're right, it's just the paragraph behind the 1 and the paragraph behind the small a are substituted with the new language provided by Mr. Grossman today.
Okay. And then the only other comment that I had is the same concern that I had when this came up to us before, and that is that at some point in time, the economy's going to come back, this development is going to keep moving forward, and the only access to those, as I understand it, the only access to those undeveloped lots are through via these streets that we are considering taking over, which means it's a lot of heavy equipment going down those roads, and probably means that they will deteriorate faster than what a normal street, residential street would. So, if we take these, we have to understand, I believe, that we're going to be faced with, at that point in time, some significant road improvements.
We have built, the streets were built to the newer standard, so they are Class A standard streets. They're at least five inches bituminous on 10 or more inches limestone, which is what we have designed and built Willis Road to withhold. And besides, the construction traffic would not be as great as general commercial traffic on road. We can always regulate the size of the loads going through there. If we do a Phase 2 agreement, we can certainly regulate. In the case of Torwood, we made them construct a separate construction entrance going to the first court in off to the right, and so there was a gravel road off of Austin Road, so they could build those spaces in the back without going on the existing paved roads because of that concern.
And I believe either of those two actions are probably appropriate when and if that development continues on. Thank you.
Correct.
Mr. La.
Just a comment that I'm not thrilled with the additional cost. However, we did open up the can of worms, if you will, when we did accept Breckenshire and Arboretum, and I guess it taught us a lesson about private streets and operation of thereof. So, I guess hopefully, city won't go into that kind of road, down that road again, pardon the pun. So, I'll support this motion. Obviously, I moved it, didn't I?
Any further discussion on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Rubel.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion in front of us to approve and authorize? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business, Item 10159, the Rec Center Winter Break Student Membership, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 6, 2010 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, to approve or not approve the winter break student membership for students between ages of 18 and 22 years for the period of December 12, 2010 to January 8, 2011, under the terms and conditions outlined in the October 6, 2010 memo.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Morrow, do we have a second?
Second.
Second to her. Discussion. Thank you. Scruggs, would you like to?
If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those, but we did a very successful summer membership, student membership, run for the past two summers, and it allows students that are away at school, that are home for a short break, to come in and use the facility. And we just wanted to try that again this year. We had some feedback from the summer, saying, you know, this would be a good thing for, you know, our college students coming home over break to take advantage of that. So, we came up with a rate that we felt was a very fair rate and reasonable, so that it would encourage our students from other colleges to come home and utilize the Rec Center. So, it's fairly straightforward. I'm hoping it would generate some people that wouldn't regularly, you know, purchase that membership to come in.
Any questions for Mr. Scruggs? Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10160, the Holiday Parade, December 4, 2010, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 7, 2010, letter and application for community event, use of public ways from the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce for the annual holiday parade. To acknowledge receipt of the October 14, 2010, memo from Police Chief Bunton, October 18, 2010, memo for Downtown Development Director Trap, October 21, 2010, memo from Fire Chief Heft, and the October 22, 2010, memo from Director of Public Works Ford Eyes. To approve or not approve the annual holiday parade to be held on December 4, 2010, is outlined in the October 7, 2010, letter of request, subject to the following conditions: One, that the required permit for the closure of US 12 be obtained from MDOT; Two, that the traffic engineer issue the required temporary traffic control orders for the street closings and use as a parade route as needed; Three, that a certificate of insurance be provided by the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce for this event, with the City of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for the event; Four, that the applicant obtain approval from the owners of the Bushes Shopping Plaza for their events to be held at that location, and further, to authorize or not authorize the Portage John Reynolds and waiving of fees for police and DPW services, which are over and above normal operating costs, and the estimated amount of $3,519.
Move to approve and authorize.
Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second Law, to approve and authorize, discussion. Mr. Osterling, would you like to talk about this application?
Thank you. I feel like I just lost my crowd. I want to talk about the parade, this is fun stuff. My name is Larry Osterling, and I'm with the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. You know, Mayor Driscoll, as you were reading through the pro- You know, Mayor Driscoll, as you were reading through the proposal for the holiday parade, it just struck me, that is, there's a lot that goes on in actually putting on an event this size, but I think it's something we can be proud of, too. Selen's Holiday Parade has grown in reputation over the years to a point where we believe it's actually one of the best in southeast Michigan. Every year, we try to grow it a little better, and we're going to promise to try it, to do the same thing this year. The good news is, we're a little ahead of the game. As you can see, our application is in, what, it's November 1st? I almost made October, that was kind of wrong, a first for us. But there's a lot of things that go into making it a big event, and it is a big event, no make any doubt about it. Every year, the parade draws thousands of people to the area, and it's not just the event itself, but it's for everything else that surrounds it, that's done to generate commerce for our merchants and show off what a great community we have. Putting on the parade, I shouldn't say parade, putting on Parade Week and the parade itself involves hundreds of hours of planning, a lot of coordination with hundreds of volunteers, lots of community groups, can be a little challenging sometimes, but it's also rewarding. And it's more than a two and a half hour event on a Saturday evening, by the way. It actually, parade events extend over an entire week, and it culminates in the following Saturday with something that loosely, we generally refer to as Treasure Trails to Santa, which happens. The parade budget this year, I want to also mention, too, that the Selenary players have really gotten on board with this parade weekend promotion that the merchants do, and they're going to utilize Stone Arch to do performances with something called a Very Grinchy Christmas for performances on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And last year, they tried it to see what would happen, and they were actually standing room only for the three performances they did, so it's popular. It's neat to see other things grow from this event. The parade budget this year is somewhere between $11,000 and $12,500, and I can't get it down any closer than that right now because the sponsor dollars haven't all come in. We can, as we have more cash flow, we can do more. Things like promotion payments on various contractees we have, we have regular performers, we have a speaker system that comes in, I mean, there's just a lot of really neat things that go into putting on a quality parade. Sometimes we even get donations for the things we put up seasonally, and this year, I think it's worth noting that the folks at Lowe's, in particular, the two Lowe's stores, one in Syle, one in Carpent Road, have come together and donated, I mean, they brought it in a truckload of 40, gave us 40 boxes of icicles, 300 string light, icicle lights for our downtown. They saw that last year, and that was something, I happened to mention to someone, and they just donated it because they thought it looked neat downtown. And by the way, the lights in the trees will go on whenever we choose to throw the switch, so if any of you have an idea what day that should be, I might want to approach the merchants on that, ask them, but we could just wait until parade night and see if they work, right? Actually, we did have them up a few weeks ago at the request of the merchants for the Ladies Night Out. We always have a good balance of people that are in the parade. We try to maintain a good balance of local groups, but floats and displays, and also have paid performers that we recruit or we know about or we bring into our parade, adds a little bit of quality. This year, we, oh, by the way, those paid portion of, we're trying to keep our dinner number of units to 85 or less. That's not always easy to do, but we have a regular, we have a regular crowd, and then we always have some surprises of people that want into it, and the number of paid groups, I would estimate to be somewhere between 15 and 20 that actually participate, and that comes right out of our parade budget. Performers that we recruit outside of our areas, by the way, not only did I get my application in early this year, getting wiser in my old age, but we also got our parade applications out, and we've already gotten about 15 of those back already. Some of the groups that are coming again are, we have the Unicyclists from Redford Township. We have a really neat cheer group we heard about, read about on the internet called the Canton Chiefets. We have a couple of top-notch drum lines for flair and this assortment of, we have, I guess it's nice to have a flair in your holiday parade, but for flair, we always have an assortment of animals, not always my favorite part of it, but it just depends on what kind of animals people are bringing in, and they have to be parade-tested animals. Yes, there is such a thing, Glenn. And for flair, in the past, the last cycle of years, we've actually had the Detroit Derby Girls, which is kind of a unique pizzazz-y type thing, and this year, we may have the Ann Arbor Derby Dimes, which is a new startup group, and actually, one of the main, our main point people for them, it's an Ann Arbor group, but she actually lives right here in Selen, so we're hoping to hear from them. We also recruit a lot of local talent, which I think all of us should be proud of, by the way. We have some really terrific groups like Dance Alliance, which is quality in anybody's parade, Macy's or whoever, and they always do a great job for us. Also, the Selen Tourlets, you know, they have national reputation, so we're really fortunate in this area to have this kind of event that draws thousands of people to the area. So I guess I don't want to add too much more other than closing on behalf of the Chamber and all the area merchants that really do benefit from this event, that brings a lot of commerce into our whole area. We would like to truly thank the people of Selen, you folks, for supporting the annual holiday parade. This will be our 35th, 36th, 35th, I think. And the real bottom line here, when you think about it, it adds a lot to our reputation, but it's really the amount of community-wide cooperation that goes into this, including lots of people, lots of groups, lots of organization, lots of government, helps us pull off a really great parade every year, great holiday event, and it helps all of us look good once again. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of coordination, sometimes it's a little bit of chaos, sometimes it's even a little bit of fun, but it's always rewarding, and I thank you for your support. The Chamber and the Holiday Committee is going to make this the best one ever, I think. Any questions?
The theme for this year's parade would be?
Oh, that would probably be something I should have mentioned right up front. The theme, for your information, some of you have asked two things. One, the theme is always, by tradition, has been set by the, or decided on by the incoming president of our board, and that's probably the most confusing thing they do all year long in terms of Chamber business because they want to make it the right thing. But this year, Jill Dernan, who's our incoming president, liked the idea of the movie called The Christmas Story, and it was, you know, you'll shoot your eye out, or the big leg lamp, or whatever, runs 24 hours a day on TNT, I know that. So she decided that would be fun, and you could make a lot of neat floats from that, a lot of unique ideas, and so that's what we're going with this. You're kind of a family film, so I, and the other thing I just forgot, I'm sorry, but there's always a lot of fun things that go on with the parade. If you do have questions, I would invite people listening in to also contact the Chamber. Yeah, Pat?
I don't know that you really have the answer to this, but are we utilizing, are we, as part of, in conjunction with the parade and all the other things going on, are we publicizing the ice rink we're putting up in the parade or into the crowd somehow?
Actually, that's been discussed, and I can't tell you for sure that they are because I haven't gotten my application yet, and maybe I'll need to do an update as we get closer, but that was a thought process that was given to it, it's just a matter of time, though they would, but Art Trapp's been having these Winter Fest meetings, you know, for the event on the 29th, and I do know that, we have this regular script, and preparing that script, by the way, for parade night is somewhat of a process, but I do know he plans on announcing that's happening. And it's also, when you see the Chamber's November newsletter, there's something in there about the ice rink, too, so.
I guess I had in mind, are we doing anything that's visual, we'll stick in these seven million munchkins we have in mind?
Do a float?
Well, I can sort of answer that question and what Larry was talking about, it is in the discussion stage, but we are thinking of having something like a float that's going to be built like a sled, that's going to be used in the Winter Fest, that's going to be hopefully put in place in the parade, and as Larry says, they're waiting for the application, but that's on the drawing board. It'll have the ice rink displayed and a banner also publicized in the Winter Fest, so.
Terrific.
Yeah.
All right, I know the other question that comes up, sometimes I do get calls and people ask about the, we always have a, for one, I can't think of a better word other than a little kid that gets to ride with Santa in the holiday parade, and we solicit those names from area churches and also from Selen area social services. So if someone has a thought in mind for that process, you might want to route it through those folks because that's where we draw the names and the nominations from. Anyway, it's a busy time at the Chamber.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve and authorize. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor of approve and authorize, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-161, this would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 1, 2010 memo from City Manager Todd Campbell, and this will be two separate motions, but the additional motion would be to approve or not approve the IBM Agreement for Exchange of Confidential Information and member addendum to the IBM Agreement for Special Projects, First of a Kind Municipal Shared Service Cloud Project, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said agreements. It's already been reviewed by the attorney. So our first motion would be to acknowledge receipt of the November 1, 2010 memo from City Manager Todd Campbell.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second?
Marl, second. Ivy, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologize for bringing this on at the last minute, certainly we try not to do that. We do have, I have been keeping City Council appraised of this project we've been working on with Michigan Municipal League and IBM, a pilot program with, it's called cloud technology, and I mean, it's been, it's been on TV, if you've seen commercials, but it's basically going with one platform, if you will, to communicate several different functions that might normally be, have multiple softwares that may or may not communicate with each other, and this would, this would allow departments, for instance, here at the city, to communicate their software to communicate where currently they are not. IBM is working on this, called a first-of-a-kind program for municipalities, they're doing some, they're out of New York, and they've been doing this with some communities there. They have a partnership, if you will, with the Michigan Municipal League, and MML has invited us, as well as the City of Howell, basically to represent the organization, so the two communities in the state to participate in this pilot program, which I think could be certainly very exciting, but, and not only could it help an organization communicate amongst each other, but potentially even other communities to communicate, to make, streamline, make collaboration much more feasible, more accessible. They have, they sent these, this agreement language to us, City Attorney Grossman reviewed it, had a few questions, worked with MML's lead attorney, Bill Mathewson, and Mr. Mathewson responded this morning with the answers that Mr. Grossman agrees with, and agrees with the current language. There is no out-of-pocket expense for the city. There will be some staff time, this will, let me, I should back up a little bit, the way this will work is, they actually have, will have a staff person, IBM will have a staff person come in and look a little bit closer at what we're thinking would be a good examples for them to work in, such as the treasurer's office, some of the back office type functions, as well as communication with the finance department, treasurer's office, also communications with our building engineering department and the assessing department. Currently, the two big softwares we use for building, engineering, and assessing is BSNA, and then our financial software is Northern Data Systems. So those, and those two don't talk together, unfortunately, but, but any case, they will come in, meet with our folks to better define that, and then we'll be off and rolling if Council considers this affirmatively. It'll be fictitious data, so we will not be utilizing any current real data. So again, there will be, there will be a staff cost, if you will, time cost, so while they're doing their day-to-day things, they'll also be working on this project a little bit, and we've been talking with them about that as well. So I think certainly it could be, I think, very positive for the organization, I mean, for and for municipalities as a whole. So they do have two agreements that they've asked us, that they've asked the city to sign. One is, and there's a, one of the documents that I handed out today was, this is essentially a description of the IBM MML documents, and the first document is a non-disclosure or confidentiality agreement that they've asked us to sign, and then the other one is the addendum, member addendum, and it basically incorporates the terms of the project agreement, except for the requirement to pay for the project manager. That is the additional one that you'll see is signed on the second page, entitled IBM Agreement for Special Project, First of a Kind Municipal Shared Service Cloud Project, and you can see where that was, that's been executed between IBM and the Michigan Municipal League, and there, the Michigan Municipal League are the ones that are responsible for any financial requirements and the city is not. Again, I do apologize if, certainly if you would like to wait until the next time, then that's fine, too, but they did, they made the request, so I said that I would present it to the City Council for your consideration.
Questions? Mr. Little?
It's good that they call this cloud technology because it's way, way over my age, but I did see an application of this in a political analysis, and it's fascinating. Now, the practicality of it, I don't know, but, you know, I didn't believe in cellphones yesterday, so. But I have a question regarding the Agreement for Exchange of Confidential Information. Has it been discussed, as on, mostly on page one of two, the agreement, has it been discussed regarding that there can be no conflict in things such as the sunshine laws and open government, that any, that the information that may be held by this technology must be available as part of, as part of government?
Right, and I'll take a swing at it, and if, that's one of the items that Attorney Grossman had, was questioning, and he's been satisfied, there is a statement on, under item number two, on the page one of two, the very last, the recipient may disclose information to the extent required by law, however, the recipient will give the disclosure prompt notice to allow the disclosure a reasonable opportunity to obtain a protective order, but, so that is, and Alan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that is a statement that allows us, because we have that same concern, that we have Freedom of Information Open Meetings Act laws to abide by, and this basically says, yes, we can abide by those and give out information as necessary.
Yes, that's correct. I was concerned about conflict with the Freedom of Information Act because obviously, as a public body, we operate in transparent fashion and are obligated to disclose things to the public, and the final disposition of that was that they pointed out to me, and I am relying on page one of the IBM Agreement for Exchange of Confidential Information, at the last item under obligations, reads as follows, the recipient may disclose information to the extent required by law. So if the Open Meetings Act requires disclosure, this agreement says we have the right to make the disclosure.
Any decisions being made about which departments would be involved in this, particularly public safety?
Well, at this point, we've made some suggestions, but like I said, there's staff, I believe there's preliminarily scheduled to come in Wednesday to meet with folks, so nothing has been, certainly nothing is in stone, we've just, we've thrown out some ideas, they want to come in, look, and evaluate, and observe, and then help us narrow it down. So, but we're open to any, certainly, suggestions or?
Well, I just, there's some, I could, if I understand a little bit of this
Well, I just, there's some, I could, if I understand a little bit of this technology, there would be some definite advantages to applying it to certain aspects of, aspects of investigation. But on the other hand, there would be some difficulties in sharing information with non-law enforcement personnel in some cases. So that's not my call. So, thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Gross?
Well, just one, one other point that you should be aware of is that the agreement may be terminated by either party with 15 days' notice. So if it's not working out, or there's something that we don't like, it can be terminated. We're bound for two years.
Do you have your hand raised? Mr. Law?
No, you can go down that way. Let's bill mulligan over.
Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. I am very much in support of the cloud computing project, and I actually saw a webinar last week that was presented by Microsoft on the subject. And there are tremendous potential advantages in cost savings, as well as in the right use of our human resources. Our potential for disaster recovery would be enhanced, because as you know, most of our data resides right here in Celine. Whether it be IBM or Microsoft, they operate these huge data centers, centralized data centers with hundreds of square feet of mainframe computers, and they guarantee that the data is safe. The other thing that intrigues me is that it would free up our IT personnel to get more involved in pursuits that actually benefit the communications of the city with the public. And our IT guy is not going to be putting out fires all the time to fix the email or other routine things that he currently is doing. So I'm very much in favor of it. I share my colleague, Mr. Marle's concern regarding the short notice of the material, and I do want to look at this particular agreement further, but I'm certainly okay with the motion that's on the floor, and I will support it. Thank you.
Mr. Law?
Well, I sort of share a differing point of view than what Mr. Ivy has pointed out, and I would be very wary of going forward and leaving our confidential or any other information, for that matter, in the hands of a large entity such as this. And really, with all respect to Mr. Ivy's comments about the IT and having someone here doing that and putting out fires, I mean, that's his job, and I prefer it to be as close to home as possible, and therefore have it accessible as quickly as possible. Now, this may do that, and I have some questions about, obviously, the agreement here and what it entails, but just by looking at it initially and hearing the discussion, I'm not at all comfortable with it. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Two questions, if I could. Mr. Campbell, do you have an estimate for the staff time? Do you have an estimate of the number of hours that might be involved, and over what period of time?
I don't have a number of hours, no. I mean, that's, that's what we're hoping to get when we meet with their staff, when they better determine where. But it certainly is going to have to be, will be manageable, because obviously, their day-to-day here comes first.
You know, if it'll be over a compressed period of time that we have to input data?
I do have, apologize. I think we had in here a thought.
While you're looking at that, let me just make my second point, then. That is, if we're going to enter fictitious data, and yet the agreement says that we can use this product for the remainder of two years, for it to be useful to us, we would have to go back and enter real data in there, I believe. Otherwise, what are we going to do with two years of fictitious data in some kind of system?
Well, my understanding is, they wanted to make sure it's going to work, it's a test, so that's, that's why they wanted to use fictitious data.
Right. So then the two-year value is minimal to us unless we decide we're going to go back and put real data.
That's true. We're not spending any money. I guess I would like to point out, because maybe I'm the one that started this whole issue, as you know, the league has been very active in trying to find government efficiencies. And this is a huge opportunity nationally for operational government efficiencies, and the league was approached by IBM to partner, because the league is actually one of the leaders in the country for this issue. And I assume a lot of that is due to the state of affairs of the state in Michigan and the ramifications on local governments that we're all aware of. So in light of the fact that I've been somewhat involved with the league at a board level and some policy work, I've been on a task force with them, sort of trying to think out of a box on how to do government differently. And so we've had a couple of meetings with a couple of city managers from around the state, and this came up as a subject. And I raised my hand and said, you know, the league has identified this as a great opportunity, and they're actually spending $30,000 to have a pilot come to the state. And I said, Celine would be interested in accessing this opportunity, because, you know, our community's always been very forward-thinking and trying to find ways to save money and provide quality services at the same time. And so that's really what, that's how this has been identified. Maybe we need an IBM person here or better information. I mean, I will still bring the other motion forward, but there is no risk at this point in time to the city. I'm sure that if they are able to identify areas for savings, which I know they will because businesses are doing this, so again, we're following, we're trailing, but we're still following, we're trailing private businesses, but, so I don't know, I guess I felt like Todd just sort of put out there, but, you know, we, this is something that we were looking to, to be, you know, one of the two cities in the state of Michigan out of 535 cities that would have an opportunity to be in this pilot program. So it's actually a great benefit, and while I understand that there are some concerns, and I guess, I don't know if, you know, Mr. Campbell, I guess maybe felt he was bringing this forward over time, over the process that you've been sort of working, but maybe there are questions that we're still outstanding that until today hadn't really been asked. So that's really the history around it, and so, you know, as far as doing test data, it's really a test to see whether or not, how we communicate on this, and then whether or not it makes sense for the city, again, we can pull out, you know, with two weeks' notice at any point in time. So, and they'll probably find another city at that point. Mr. Rhodes? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I sort of heard these questions that some council members weren't aware.
It's just pretty new to me.
Yeah.
There's been some statements, and I knew something was going on out there in the clouds. This is the first time I've seen anything.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not objecting to the opportunities so much as I'm trying to quantify what our involvement is going to be in it.
Well, it's a first, I just saw it today, too. So that's the same for, I think we're all the same, and I don't know. I think it's because it was going through a lot of legal language. Mr. Law?
I'd just say, it's, it's more than just money to save, okay? It's very, you have to be very careful and just understand what this involves. And I don't, I'll be the first one to say, I don't totally understand everything that this involves, but just by hearing the discussion and reading what I had here tonight, I'm not uncomfortable with it. It's more than just saving money. Don't always look at the bottom line, okay? Because that's, there's more to it than that. And, and I'm just curious as to why other municipalities haven't all come on. If this is such a great idea, why haven't hundreds of municipalities or a dozen municipalities not signed up for this? Maybe Mr. Campbell has an answer to that.
Mr. Campbell?
If I might, to Mr. Law's question, there have been multiple, I think eight or 10 in the state of New York municipalities that they've worked on this pilot, and then they've offered it, and I think it says two to three or two to four Michigan Municipal League members, and they've, my understanding is they've chosen two. But that's, to answer, hopefully answer your question, they have, they have worked with eight or 10 other municipalities in the state of New York with this pilot program, and they're going to do similar with us. So it's not, so as far as, it's not offered out in the market, they're not, they're not selling this as a, they're still going through the testing phase to see how it may or may not work, trying to work out the bugs before they sell it at the commercial level or the municipal level. I certainly understand, I certainly understand the concern, and I guess that they'd requested it, to bring it forward and see for consideration, and we can bring it back at the next meeting and, at the very least, bring someone in from MML to...
Mr. Little?
No, I'm, hey, I want to cut him off.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, to bring in someone to talk in greater detail, that's been more involved from the very beginning. But this would be, as I'm looking at the estimated schedule, you know, two months for planning, two months for design, implementation, deployment, three months, three months for testing, so two months for reporting out, and that's not all going to, my understanding, that's not going to be our time. But, but there will be, it'll be a few months, handful of months that we will be doing, that we would be if we go forward with this.
Mr. Little, sir.
I'm wondering if some of the council's concerns might be better served if we had a representative from this here. Would that harm in any way our opportunities for this?
I'm not aware, I mean, I, we can certainly let them know that we'd like to discuss this in greater detail and have someone...
Prior to a vote?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I certainly would offer to move this to a some date certain, and have the people who would be involved in this come and let council ask the questions and so on. As long as we don't have a deadline that'll make the deal go away, why not?
Is that correct?
As far as I know, they didn't say that, they requested that, that we bring it up for consideration tonight if we could. They didn't say if you don't, you know, we're going to go elsewhere, so.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor right now to acknowledge receipt of your memo. So is there further discussion? Mr. Marle?
I was just going to add, Mayor, that I basically concur with my colleague, Mr. Little, although I think much of this proposal is sort of benign and innocuous, I do have some initial concerns, and because I have not been afforded the opportunity to review these documents in their entirety, I would not be comfortable rendering a decision tonight, and I think it would be beneficial if we did have a representative from IBM present to address concerns and answer questions. So I'm comfortable, obviously, acknowledging receipt, but if it came to a vote on the second motion, I would be against that. Thank you.
Well, would it be somebody from IBM or the league? It'd probably be somebody from the league, right?
Well, I will, I'll do my best to get someone from IBM here. They were scheduled, I'll, we'll make contact with them first thing tomorrow.
Okay. We'll try to get them to come to the next meeting, and if everybody could look over the documents and submit their concerns or questions to Mr. Campbell, so we could get those resolved. We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor to acknowledge receipt of the November 1st memo from City Manager Todd Campbell, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have item 10, 158. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 28, 2010 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding resolution for mini-grant application for city of Celine public art installation to approve and adopt, or, sorry, the resolution as submitted authorizing application to the Arts Alliance of the Ann Arbor Area, the re-granting agency for Washtenaw County for the Michigan Council for the Arts, for mini-grant an amount of $3,800 for public art seeding in the downtown of North Ann Arbor Street, anticipated to be installed in late spring 2011. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Rhodes, second. Marle? Mr. Ivy, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to make it clear, I'm not opposed to supporting the authorization of the mini-grant for this public art seeding project. I just want to be sure that we're not rushing this through and, as a result, ignoring something that might be important. Forgive me if I am not as well-versed on the affairs of the EDC as some of you are, because I really have not had a whole lot to do with it, and perhaps I should have, in the last few years, explored the operations of the EDC a little further, but I just want to be sure, looking at, at the resolution, paragraph three states that the city assures that it'll provide additional money, which is $13,000 for the funding. And I guess where I have a problem, and Mr. Burgoyne, I always rely on your expertise and experience on matters such as this, and perhaps you can shed some light, clarify, and help me understand. The money would be already budgeted, I'm assuming, in the fiscal year 11 budget for the EDC, and it would be...
Not exactly.
Not exactly. That's why I wanted to bring this up. It's a project improvement? Would it fall into that category?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here when this memo was written. The money is budgeted in the general fund and came from the TIFA. It's $12,000. What is being asked here is that we have $12,000 plus more than $1,000 in-kind, so that's the city's portion. You have already approved last June the $12,000, so that's in the budget. The in-kind is just something that we report. It's our actual personnel activity. And the $3,800 is a grant request that is now requested for two things, for installation, which the committee didn't have enough information to get the full dollar picture, plus $500 was added in to add things that are representative of the community that will be wired in or glued into the artwork. So those are the two changes, the installation costs and the specific items chosen to represent the community to go into the artwork. Those were the increases in costs. And the budget increase was slightly over $1,000 for in-kind, which doesn't really cost us anything, it's just marking up what our, our time was on this. And the $12,000 is budgeted from TIFA and not EDC.
Well, there's, there's quite a sum from TIFA that goes into the EDC budget, is there?
Right, but it's not coming through the EDC at all.
It's not that $135,000?
I didn't see this memo before you got it, actually.
You didn't write it, however.
No, I didn't.
You did not?
No.
Okay.
That was under my name. She signed off for me.
Okay, well, perhaps, I'm sure you read it, perhaps you'll recall...
I read it afterwards. Afterwards, it's in your packet.
The invitation from the Arts and Culture Committee to council to attend a work session on the, on the project, which is conceptual at this point, and I guess I felt a little reluctant to proceed approving the grant, the mini-grant, without really knowing what we're approving it for, because we're still in the conceptual stages. So, but I think you clarified where the money comes from, and it's not that we have to juggle the funds like we did when we paid for the website a couple of years ago.
The money is allocated, there's no future funds needed from the city unless we don't get the grant.
Well, as always, I'm more comfortable after your explanation, sir. Thank you.
It's in the Arts and Culture Budget, because they identified this as a short-term goal in their long-range strategy, and so last spring, I believe, they made a request in their budget.
Capital item for $12,000.
We, actually, we're talking between the BDA and Celine Arts and Culture Committee. There was some talk about trying to provide street art, and then we tried to combine that for efficiency in street art furniture, which we had seen in other communities, in our sister city and other places. So that was suggested, and so it's a way to actually possibly save some money. And then they are actually working with two artists, one that does, works with mosaic tiles, and the other works with wrought iron, and they have, I believe, a mock-up at Mary's desk that, is it still there?
Yes.
That's available, but I know that they've asked, invited council to come a week from tonight to their meeting, and the artists will be here, and we may be able to talk about it. They have sort of elaborated, they really want to pull in our heritage as a community and bring, have some, possibly some pieces that within, and I'm not either, you know, like, so a very creative group of people...
like, so a very creative group of people somehow pull that into the sculpture. So, it's sort of, you know, it's a good mix of different perspectives, I guess is basically how you put it. Mr. La?
Well, as a comment was made earlier, and I guess the timing was just against the committee, but I would have also liked to have seen what the art was depicting and what it was looking like, in other words, before going for this grant request or expending any money. But I see the deadline is for November 1st, today, and the viewing, if you will, is a week from today, as you mentioned, Mayor. So, again, the timing is, seems to be skewed here and...
Actually, you approved the $12,000 last June. The city money is already approved. We've already spent some of the city money. We spent $500 as advance to the artists to do conceptual work. So, the project is already underway. This is for a grant for some enhancements to install it. So, you've already approved the project, the project's already underway, it's partially spent.
Mr. Little?
Well, we haven't approved the artwork. I mean, who's got the final say as to whether or not...
Well, that's, it is correct and I will, you know, there was Arts Alliance Annual Conference last weekend, or last week, and Lynn Fryman, who's our co-chair of the Celine Arts and Culture Committee, had contacted me, I think either that day or the day before I was at the conference with her, that she had heard there might be opportunity for some funding. So, that's, I mean, I think if worse came, worse came to, you know, if we decided we didn't like the sculpture, I think we would just say we don't want to move forward with this particular piece. We still have the money, we probably wouldn't get, be able to keep the grant because the grant is for installation of this piece, I would think. I don't know, Mr. Burgoyne, it is specifically for installation of a piece in the spring, whether or not it's the piece that we're currently being, that's being proposed that they asked council to look at? I don't know.
The grant application has pictures of the mock-up that's in Mary's office and talks about finishing the two products and installing two products.
You know, art is in the eye of the beholder and I'm all for art within the city, throughout the city, but there, there is, from my point of view, a very practical issue here. Can we sit on the seats? Or are they really too artsy? Things like that. As long as we're in a position where, you know, we're going to have this presentation on the 8th, next Monday, correct? And I think council needs to really have approval of this. And so, I don't have a problem with giving this the go-ahead to pick up an extra three grand or do something, but I think I do want to see council have the final say on what's appropriate, where it's going to go and so on. It may be very difficult for council to reach those decisions, I don't know. We all have our own ideas about it, but I think that's important since it's going to be permanently, or at least it's permanent as things go in the world, going to be in our town.
Mr. Burgoyne?
There are two more steps. There are going to be construction agreements. So, so far, they've only been given $500 for design. So, there's going to be construction agreement and then there's going to be installation. So, there are two more steps and I saw City Manager nodding that the council would get this back.
If I may, ma'am Mayor, thank you, Lee. That has been staff's intent from beginning of this project is that whatever they come up with, before they go, have permission to go forward, it has to come to City Council for your approval, that this is, for the artwork. So, absolutely, I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. La?
I don't want to belabor it any longer than that. I'm just saying that, well, Mr. Little is right, that we have the final say. It's sort of, if you will, puts the gun to our heads. If this grant goes through, then how can we say no? Then, if we say no, then the grant is gone and therefore that opportunity, well, you know, it just puts the pressure on council that, okay, there's the piece, we have the grant, supposing that, or the good possibility of having the grant, but then if we say no, then, well, there goes $3,800 that we could have had for the project gone. We could reapply again, I guess, but...
Well, you know, it was, like I said, it's a timing issue and there's not really, it's a restriction on, that's what they normally mean, you know, this, so that's just the way it worked out, that the artists aren't ready and whatever. So, that's, and I don't think there's anything we do except to say if we don't like the, you know, public art and we don't want to move forward with it, then we'll, they'll go back to drawing board and try to do another RFP. So, Mr. Little?
I just think with, with any grant, you can always give the money back. So, that's why I'm more comfortable with this. And of course, I think there would be a bit of a time, a bit of time before we would actually receive the money, should it be awarded anyway. And during that time, I would hope that council would reach at least a majority decision on everything involved in it.
Okay, is there further discussion on this motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Rose, second, Marl, to approve and adopt. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. I made a mistake on the agenda. We're going to have discussion items. The update on Village Marketplace and Lobs will come after we go, we're going to, I apologize, we're going to move into, convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. We will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. That will be before public comment. I apologize, I got that backwards. And so, we'll go on to discussion right now. Do we have commission and committee reports? Mr. La?
Recent planning commission meeting. We had a revisitation, if you will, of the site plan extension for the clean getaway car wash that's on Sage Court. The previous vote was in favor of extending the site plan by a year by a vote of five to three. However, there needed to be six affirmative votes for that to be approved and there was not. So, it was put on the agenda again and after some more discussion, it was agreed, I think unanimous vote to, I might have that wrong. Anyway, it did pass and, but the site plan extension is for nine months, not for the year, but for nine months. And Mr. Deal has, he was in attendance at the meeting, fortunately, and he did say that he intends to move forward with the project once he gets other matters of other business cleared up, which he says has been occupying a lot of his time, which is why this is, well, I guess lately anyway, has been dragging out. So, that's, that was the main item on the planning commission.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Rose?
The youth council met on October the 19th and I have some data here of some of their activities this school year so far. They have donated 145 hours of volunteer time so far, which is very good for a group of very busy young people. And also had a report on the Dress for Less fundraiser that occurred earlier. They had a total of 202 dresses that were brought in to their event. Seventy-six of them were sold and they netted $779 back to the youth council for putting on that event. But I think best of all, there were 76 young ladies who obtained dresses that they didn't have to spend a whole lot of money for. And they are, their next events, they're working with Celine Social Services to adopt the family and working on putting together the middle school overnight lock-in, which will occur at the rec center on February 4th. Takes a lot of lead time to put that together. And they have also volunteered some time at the Fifth Corner Teen Center. And while those two activities are not officially linked, certainly a lot of the youth who participate in the youth council are also active in the teen center. That teen center will open officially on November the 15th and will be open Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of each week thereafter from 2:45 until 6:30 in the evening. We are still in process of developing programs and obtaining equipment and continue to look for adult monitors who are willing to spend some time at the teen center when it's open. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Ivey?
Thank you. The Celine Parks Commission met on the 19th of October and had a very, what I thought was a very productive discussion on goals, reviewing the goals for this year and then beginning to, to think about setting the goals for next year. Commissioners were urged to look at the master plan, particularly the recreation aspects of it, and come to the meeting this month on the 16th to finalize goals for the next fiscal year. The spring park cleanup dates were set for next year in May. Two parks were chosen, Canterbury and Marlepool will be the locations for the May 14th park cleanup. The commission also reviewed the splendid results of this year's Green Thumb Award Program and decided that it went so well that next year they're going to dedicate three people to this project instead of two. Finally, there was a presentation by a scout on an orienteering project at Curtis Park. And one can put a deposit on a compass at the rec center and take that compass to the park and go from point to point and have a pleasant afternoon discovering all the points on the compass, I suppose. And that does it for the Parks Commission. The Environmental Commission also met and at that time, we did not have our new liaison. She's sitting beside me tonight and congratulations, by the way, on your appointment and welcome to the council. She will be sitting in on the next meeting of the Environmental Commission. I sat in on the commission's meeting also on Tuesday, October 19th. And the commission discussed the department head's sustainability survey, which was presented to the city manager and shared with the staff, I presume, and will likely be in the near future presented back to the city council just for their information. There was some discussion about the recycle bins that were used during the Oktoberfest and the consensus was that these bins were not effective, they, the receptacles did not have a wide enough opening at the top, so people tried to jam pizza cartons in there and it didn't work. So, they're looking at that. They're looking at working with the BDA. Of course, the BDA is in the process of choosing the recycle bins that will be purchased and the Environmental Commission will have some input on that. They also looked at the bylaws and the ordinances that dictate what the Environmental Commission is supposed to do and there was some discussion on that and they will continue to look at those in the next meeting. I suppose that's all. Thank you.
Mr. La?
The Slink Celtic Festival is again resuming meetings planning for next year and there's a meeting on the 11th here. You know, city hall's closed, meet with volunteers, we can meet. And then, there's going to be a regular schedule, there already is a regular schedule, starting in January, you're going to take December off and you're going to start in January with the whole meeting cycle. So, the planning work goes on. The rec center task force has been having good meetings, interesting meetings and much good is being developed there. But I heard a figure today, I don't know if council's aware of, and of course, I forget the number, but as to how many new, how many new memberships have been gained on 10-10 and other, and other times? Can you just share that?
I apologize for not having the exact numbers, but we did, on 10-10-10 for the open house event, we did sell 255 memberships that day. The number of new memberships versus renewing memberships, I don't know the difference right now, but it was, those were all memberships. It could have been a monthly membership, an annual membership, family, individual, resident, non-resident, but total of 255.
No, you said 137, exactly.
No, 255.
Of new members?
I did not say. I, I don't have the figures in front of me. I don't know. So, I apologize. I can, that'll be in my monthly report that...
Yeah, but I just think that that's a really positive thing to have at the rec center and I know we'll look forward to all the exacts of the figures, but it's good news.
Okay, further committee reports. Mr. Campbell, can you, you're going to follow up on the police report from the police, the article regarding cases?
Sure, thank you, ma'am Mayor. As you may recall at the last meeting, there was an article referenced the, what they call the case clearance percentages for law enforcement agencies in Washtenaw County. Ours was, well, we considered exceptionally low and didn't think that that was correct. And I also gave a brief explanation as we were starting to look into it, the police department was looking into it, that we thought it was essentially, didn't follow up or didn't, if you will, didn't check the correct box. So, I know I'd sent the information, the response from Chief Button to City Council, so if I might, so I don't, I was just going to kind of go through this a little bit for the viewing public as well. For much work, we found a problem with our clearance rate in the 2009 report that was recently in the news, it's very complicated, but Chief Button did his best to put it in simplistic terms, I think he did a good job. Our new computer system consists of three basic parts. There's a computer aided dispatcher, CAD, records management system, RMS, and finally the system that compiles the micro reports that go to the state. Our officers have been very good at closing the reports in the RMS system, which we all believe was showing a clearance for the case. We have now learned that the field that we were using was clearing the case, but only administratively and not for the state micro report. And that's the state micro report, those are the results that we saw, the clearance We randomly pulled some cases and found that although the cases were officially cleared, they still showed an open status in the Clemis micro system. And Clemis were part of a regional group out of Oakland County area that we report to. We are embarking on a project to verify all the 2010 reports to be sure that those numbers, we told Clemis that several departments had the same problem. So, we weren't the only ones that misinterpreted our directions when filling out Clemis reports. We are embarking on a project to verify all the 2010 reports to be sure that those numbers are reported accurately. Concurrent with that, we are putting all of our personnel through some new training to see that all, that they all understand the proper method of closing reports. We'll then go back into the 2009 reports and adjust disclosures that are improper. This will result in the totals for 2010 report, which we released in October of 2011, to be higher than normal. And Chief will be able to, at that point, to separate the two figures so the council can have the accurate figures for 2010 and will keep posted on the update. He figured it's going to take at least, at least a month or so to go back through all those reports. But essentially, we were checking the box that we thought was proper, but it was only clearing out administratively and not clearing it out totally for the, we'll call the mikers' report.
I took, this Clemis system has on several, or I think at least two pages, closed, and it puts stuff in that box, and you soon, you have closed the case, but that's the wrong page. It's another closed page. The other thing I was concerned about, too, was that we, you know, that there, why wasn't there a review of the statistics prior to going out to Clemis? Well, apparently Clemis doesn't share until they have published these things. So there's no way for the local agency, this is very much like the FBI data system, where you feed them data, and they don't tell you whether they think it's right or wrong. It just shows up in a large report someplace, and, you know, it's pretty hard to undo, but that's the nature of the beast, and you live by the computer, and you expire by the computer, I guess.
Thank you.
I'm sure the chief can explain it better than I.
The reports and other announcements we have on November 16th, we're going to have a, what do you want, what are we calling that? The downtown focus group that we want, we're trying to get the community, everybody to come out and talk about what they like to see in their downtown? Do you want to talk about it a little bit further?
Well, the BDA, Cindy, Chief Go, the chair of the BDA, we're working, I mean, we have work groups set up as far as physical improvements and working on other projects and business recruitment, those types of things. And one of them, of course, is physical improvements in, you know, 2005 maybe, I believe, 2006, when we had the study done for a streets, downtown streetscape, and wanted to talk about those ideas and what have been proposed. Just, it's an opportunity to come out and talk about what you want to see in your downtown, because it is all our downtown, and so it's an opportunity to come and comment, see what the BDA is currently working on, and is that the right direction? Do we want to see something else? And so it's a community workshop to see what the status of BDA in the downtown, and see if they want to do some other things.
And then, and that, do you know what time? Is that 6:30?
6:30.
And then November 8th is the Arts, Celine Arts and Culture Committee, the presentation on the public art, so you'll put that on your calendar. Are there other reports or announcements?
If I may, Madam Mayor, just real quick, that item, the community workshop is on the website as well, the flyer, but also on the website, is the Washtenaw County Transit Plan there. You can go on there, and it's, they call it a game kind of, to see what, so individuals, they can see what individual persons' needs are for transportation around the county, so they can, to help design a countywide type transit system.
You just click on it, and it goes, takes you right to the game, and it's basically a document they're using to compile. You know, we had the planning session here. This is a little more in-depth with alternatives and stuff. So, thanks. And then we went, Councilmember Morrow, Cine Andrew Campbell, and I went to a meeting last Friday, the LEAK hosted around enterprise facilitation that was very interesting, and I think we're going to be bringing something back to you. But it was a gentleman that they met at a national conference that works with small businesses and facilitates growth in small businesses, or success, let's just say, small business, entrepreneurial success. He is a great model, so hopefully we'll be bringing something back on that. I think that's it. Do we have any other reports or announcements? Okay, we need a motion and a second to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. The city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session.
Move to convene into closed session.
Second.
Your motion and a second? You want to take a roll call vote?
Sure. Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Chair Hare?
Yes.
Councilmember Ivey?
Yes.
Councilmember Laub?
Yes.
Councilmember Morrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay.